We're gonna go ahead and get started with the work session. Thanks, everybody, for being here today. The first item on tonight's work session is the discussion of the Red Bull Park, a monarch butterfly sanctuary, and encourage volunteers to provide a workday to make that possible. There is an expenditure of less than a hundred dollars, which, that doesn't need to be approved by city council. But I think that to make that a monarch butterfly sanctuary requires approval by the city council. So, are you gonna speak to that, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you, and I'll be very quick. This actually came out of the Tree Committee, not the Recreation Board. Mr. Gaston, who is a citizen of Fairhope, came and made a presentation about the need for habitat for the monarch butterfly, which is a migratory butterfly. And we had a wonderful presentation, learned a whole lot. And there are certain plants that they like, that are native. I believe milkweed is one of them. And his request was to the Tree Committee, as an advisory committee, to encourage the city council to consider designating our Knoll Park as a sanctuary and be comfortable with us propagating milkweed as part of the natural habitat and flora and fauna that grows there. Paul Merchant said that the cost of seeds on an annual basis would be sixty dollars or less, so it's not a big thing, and that the Tree Committee would like to work as a volunteer group to encourage folks to do things and help in the park to encourage the monarch butterflies. And that's really the totalitarian of the requests that they made.
Wouldn't we periodically, and it's rare, let's say, every three to five years, because it was quite a long time between the burning of Knoll Park to keep the undergrowth down, would that do anything? Is that allowed with a monarch butterfly sanctuary, or is it encouraged? I mean, do you know, will it help or hurt?
As what I understand is that milkweed will regenerate, but it also helps to reseed to encourage a good growth of it. So, the regular burning would not have a negative effect because it could be replanted. The cost of seed, it's just an application, would not negatively affect it. And I cannot think of our forester friend on the committee who usually does the burns, but he was, Patrick, thank you, was perfectly okay that there would be no conflicts with that.
Excellent. Council, any comments? Is everybody pretty much in agreement that that sounds like a good idea? Okay. All right, Doug, can you make a note to put that on the next agenda, to declare that a monarch butterfly sanctuary with whatever is necessary to do that?
And I will forward the background information he provided to the Tree Committee, just for y'all's package.
Are other butterflies allowed to go there?
I think there's a complete, open, non-discriminatory policy. So, all are welcome.
Okay. Richard, you're still up. Number two on tonight's work session, update on US-98 and Alabama 104, multi-use path.
Yes, sir, and just kinda make this quick. You have on the agenda tonight a request for a change order of thirty-five thousand and some odd change. Just so you know, this was a TAP project that was awarded to the city in 2014. And unfortunately, that process went through several iterations to come to complete fruition. One of them was an issue with the bridge across Fly Creek. As you know, ultimately, what was designed and then what was built was much different. A wooden boardwalk would not work, and thus, a single-span aluminum bridge with approaches were put in place. But in that span of time between the grant, the design for the project, and the completion of the project, a couple of things happened. One, there was a significant utility upgrade to a lift station that is on the north side of the creek crossing of US-98 that has a significantly raised driveway that leads down to it. And that was never picked up in the plans. So, when that part of construction got to, there had to be an adjustment of grade so that that sidewalk could cross over that drive access to the lift station and then transition back down to existing grade. The majority of that additional cost was in that fill and grade. But this is a kind of, these decisions were actually made and approved before my arrival and probably just about before any of the current administrative staff's arrival. And it's just, you know, as the project got completed, these numbers came forth. And as you know, I don't recall right off the top of my head, but I think the grant paid about four-hundred thousand, or close to four-hundred thousand, three-eighty-something amount of the project. But this is what is required to close this project out.
Any questions, council? I had Richard explain this since it was on tonight's agenda, and this would save us the trouble when we get there.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, amendment to the Fairhope Arts and Crafts Festival Foundation City of Fairhope Memorandum of Understanding. Would y'all like to come forward and explain this quick change? I know it's very simple. Yeah, this is item, this will be visited again on item fourteen on tonight's agenda.
Basically, what we're doing is on North Church Street from Magnolia to the second entrance into the parking garage, that has been deemed for us to use in the past. However, at the request of the police, they have asked us not to use that, so not to block the two entrances into the parking garage. So therefore, we're asking to replace that area on South Church, to replace it from St. James down right in front of where the parking garage entrance next to the park. So it's a little bit less space, but at least it gives us some space to make up for that, to accommodate the police request.
Are you losing any exhibitors due to that smaller space?
We have lost some due to that, so we're trying to make up some of that space.
Will you get all back? What you lose on the north part of church, will you be able to get back in the same numbers on the south part of it?
Right, enough to make it work, yes, sir.
Okay. I guess, are there any, are there any other areas that y'all have thought about maybe expanding into at this time?
No, not at this time. You know, we did down Johnson Street, which we're, you know, kind of making that work as well, and that is working. So that's about all of, all the space that we can go.
So, when you're on that north part of Church Street, when you say the second entrance, second going from which direction?
The one right behind Fairhope Hardware. That's what I'm calling the second.
Okay. So it'll be open all the way to that entrance?
That's correct. The police have asked us not to block either one of those entrances.
So neither one will be blocked?
That's right.
So there's gonna be two points of entry?
That's correct.
And exit, okay.
That's correct.
Do y'all have any questions about that? Sounds pretty straightforward. Anybody have any issue with that? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we get to some more budget discussion, because the budget discussion has been taking up quite a bit of our work session time, I wanted to give council members an opportunity to give some committee updates in the work session. The Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, the Tree Committee met this past week, and amongst some other general discussions, we set Arbor Day for February the sixteenth. So they're already getting that in the works. Rec Board met on Wednesday also. No real news to report out of the Rec Board at this time.
Okay, all right. Councilman Brown?
I missed the EAC meeting because of budget meeting and then the, nothing out of the bike pad.
Do you recommend the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar request in tonight's budget?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't really have a whole lot of committee updates either. Mostly been focused on budget. And I would say the library, you know, renovations are underway, or repairs are underway, not renovations, but repairs are underway, and they had to shut down for a few days just due to the extent of some of those repairs.
Okay. Well, tonight on the agenda, item seven is authorizing the mayor or councilman to make an application for the next round of AIP Airport Improvement Grants that we're applying for to try to complete the east side build-out, I say build-out, I'm sorry, infrastructure. That would include the sewage improvements and the next layer of blacktop that needs to go on, that, those pads on that side, and the aprons and the taxiways on that side. I would encourage you, if you haven't been to an Airport Authority meeting, to come to one. The last meeting was last week, and we also got a glimpse into the plans for that east side. It included another FBO fuel farm, our farms, as it may turn out, multiple hangars for lease, tee hangars that we can rent space out in, and also tie-downs. So we're getting very, very close to being able to increase our revenues and hopefully becoming more self-sufficient and getting off the city's nickel. In the following year, we'll be asking for more grant money, and as part of that, it may be that we start asking for monies to pay for additional lands over there. If we recover monies to pay for land, that will go back to the city to pay down debt on that, on that land. So, all that's a good thing. I do look for our, within the next, you know, probably eighteen months, once they finish the east side, and we start putting out proposals, requests for people to bid on certain parcels to put private hangars there, and otherwise, we will, we will start increasing our revenues at the airport. So I know that's something that some people are sensitive to. Hopefully, hopefully, that'll get a long way to make, like I said, the airport self-sufficient. Let's see, department heads. Richard, let's save you, because we have some questions about your budget, if you don't mind. Jay, do you have anything, water, sewer?
I updated the councilman's floor about what's going on at the tank. Anybody have any questions about it so far?
Councilman Brown said he drove by there today, and there were five people up there on the tank, walking around, hanging the curtains and...
Right. Just to let everybody know, it's going better than I could have ever hoped for.
I didn't drop by to check on it, I just, that's on my route.
Yeah, I understand. And it'd been okay if you did, because you have to answer to the same customers that I have to answer to. But they're trying to drop the bonnet this week, and they're also going, that's the very top part of the containment process, and they're gonna start dropping the curtain. The inside is effectively done as far as priming goes, but not, and it's completely done as far as priming goes, it's been inspected. It's not painted. They will paint it as time permits, but they're trying to get as much blasting done. They have eight blast hoses going, which is outstanding. So we expect to go quick, and then I'll check into the logo and see where we're at with it, and see if they're gonna paint around it, or they're gonna replace it. I'll have the information of that, and it'll be on my update Thursday.
So, what shall we start telling the citizens? I know you're maybe a little reluctant to make any promises. Is there any, any time that we could tell them to expect completion, return to cell phone service as normal as it could be?
Right, we've spoken to AT&amp;T directly and the other providers, and everybody's pretty adamant that they don't want to start installing until everything's done. And we expect, right now, I talked to Carl Nelson again today, and nobody said anything different. December eighteenth seems to be some type of date that we could turn over to the AT&amp;T and also providers. So mid-December, I'm hoping, if not sooner. And if there's any setback whatsoever, you know, of course, I'll let you guys know right away.
And on our website, too, on the front page, we have frequently asked questions, and we update that every time he sends an update. So people can, there is one for the water tower painting, so...
Right, you'll get an update again Thursday. I'm on vacation Friday, so it'll be this Thursday instead of Friday.
Okay. I appreciate those updates.
That's a problem.
Good job on your budget. We don't have any questions for you on that, so...
That's great.
Yeah. You got anything for council tonight? Okay. Wayne?
Just wanted to mention the upcoming visual preference survey, November eighth and ninth. We should have some information coming out, but just want to encourage everybody to participate in that as a chance. We hear a lot about what we don't want to see on Greeno Road and other parts of the city. This is a chance for us to articulate what we do want to see. So it's a different angle of attacking that issue, and so we're looking forward to that. We'll be having public meetings, but also we'll have an online, the ability to, if you can't attend the meeting, to vote online as well. So you're looking at a series of images, and then you can rate each image, and that will then be sort of summarized, and the consultants will kind of tell us what that means and the results, and then we'll, we'll get to work on trying to address those concerns and bringing something back to the council that will help alleviate some of the issues we've been having on Greeno Boulevard, on Greeno Road. So it'll be a good exercise, be a lot of fun, I think, and again, just a different, different way of attacking the problem and getting some input that will be very helpful to us.
And you said, when is that?
November eighth and ninth. Shirley, what's it, twelve o'clock?
Eighth and ninth, yeah. So, it is six p.m. on Thursday, the eighth and the ninth.
We have one at night, one in the day. And the one in the day is gonna be at the library, the one at night will be in the, council chamber, is good.
And if you can't come to, you can do it online.
That's right, that's right.
On the city website.
Right. We'll probably, we'll probably keep it open for, I think we said, two or three days to do the voting online and then close it, and then, again, give all the results to the consultant and move forward with that. We had a meeting with them this morning, and I think it's gonna be a good project. It's, we're gonna, it's, it'll probably take, I'm guessing, about an hour to go through the thing, go through the survey, so, it'd be exciting, so...
That is good, very good. And your budget, we don't have any questions either?
It's a big one, so...
No, good job, thank you.
We should thank the Baldwin County Realtors, too, because they're sponsoring this visual preference survey. Y'all approved that grant that went in, so that did get, we did get it. So that's offsetting some of the costs, so that's exciting. I just wanted to tell you, I talked about the Director's Roundtable, but I'm not sure if everyone hears it. We're gonna kick off the National Park Service process. Remember, we submitted a proposal to them to come in and help us with a connectivity plan, and we were selected. I got notice on Thursday or Friday of last week. We'll get a formal, like, press release from them sometime this week. But that will involve a lot of people. They'll run that process, and a lot of volunteer groups, trailblazers, bike pad will be involved. Some of you will be involved. So, that's gonna kick off right after the visual preference survey, so, like, about the same time, we'll start doing that. That was the only kind of new thing that I think, I don't know if you had questions about our budget? We really didn't get to go through all that.
I think we had two total edits.
Okay.
And I think that that was the mayor, Jimmy and Robert had discussed those. There was, there, it's in the resolution tonight, but I don't think, did anybody have any questions about that budget?
I don't think so.
And we've been working with, we had Jimmy and Kevin involved in some of our internal discussions about the branding or marketing stuff that we're working on for advertising, but we don't have anything to show yet, but we should soon.
I had a question, and it might actually be a Richard question, but since you mentioned the Baldwin County Realtors, that pocket park.
Yes.
How are we on the timeframe?
Richard promised me Friday that it's about to kick off. Oh, he stepped out. It's about to, so, finally had enough dry weather to start with the concrete.
Okay.
So I think we'd already, we got an extension from Washington from them, their headquarters.
That's what I was mostly wondering.
But it looks like we might actually be on time anyway, so, yeah.
For the what now?
The pocket park by the library. It wasn't, it wasn't dry long enough for us to pour the concrete. And so we had a timeline on that grant that had to be...
Yeah, we didn't wanna go over the timeline and then not, not receive the funds for it.
Is that over there where the walking school bus?
Yes.
Was set up?
Yes, so that's phase one. The walking school bus hopes to apply next year and finish out after construction is done, another part.
It's just to the west of that, then, in that little...
Say, I have a new butterfly.
The butterflies. Oh, there he is. So, when are we starting?
George, on Sunday, earlier said Wednesday morning.
Yes, all right, Wednesday morning, there we go. So enjoy the butterflies, and it's, you know, the mayor signed the mayor's monarch pledge. I mean, so the butterfly wall is kind of part of that Eastern Shore Art Center. Couple of you are on their board, right? They're doing some butterfly things there, so we'll be butterflies all over town.
Okay.
Good stuff.
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Major, you have anything?
No, pardon.
Okay. John, oh wait, you're a citizen. You're just always here. Chief, Hollinghead?
I don't know.
Okay. Chief?
No, sir.
All right. So fire department budget, there's no questions on that, and Chief Hollinghead, I think, nothing on that police budget should be a surprise to you tonight. Anyway, does anybody else have anything else? I'm gonna jump into a few budget questions.
I got one other thing, just to...
Sure, bring up whatever you want right now, we got a little time.
Wayne, is Wayne already here? Wayne may have left. I know he's probably just tired of me bringing this up, but, well, you know, we recently amended the height ordinance to go forty feet and still capped at three stories. There's a building or home under construction that's kind of across the street from Greer's, and it's got, it's gonna have a rooftop terrace, I believe, which is accessed with an elevator. You know, in my opinion, they've been granted a building permit and everything, there's nothing we can do about, about that particular property, but I don't think that, it doesn't meet what my interpretation of the height amendment was, and I think Wayne and Eric both interpreted that it was okay. And so I've talked to Wayne about it several times. I'm not saying there's anything we can do about the particular one under construction, but I don't, I don't think we want to see the next fifteen properties under construction in downtown to all have that. I think it's probably fifty feet to the, to the top of that.
Yeah, and I think what, what the issue is, is that in most ordinances, you have the height, and then you have things like elevator shafts, things like that, that they're allowed to exceed it because they have to. Elevator shaft has to go above the top floor for it to work. You know, now, so that's, that's pretty typical. If we want to change that, we certainly can. We can certainly change that and bring amendment back to you very quickly, if that's what we want to do. But we need to sort of define what can and can't go above.
Right, and that's why I want to bring it up, because so, right now, you know, the way it's being interpreted allows for that, and I think we've done once. You can't interpret it differently moving forward, so if we, and I may be the only person who doesn't like the way that, that came out, but if, if we don't want to have additional instances of this, we would have to actually amend the ordinance. Otherwise, you can't interpret it one way and then change your interpretation, I don't think. We've set the precedent.
Yeah, and I think the way we see that, I mean, and again, we can certainly change, we need to make sure we sort of parse out what we don't want to exceed and what we do want to exceed, because you do have chimneys, you do have steeples and spires and things like that, which are architectural elements to it, and also chimney has to be, building code has to be elevated and so forth. So if we want to do that, we need, need to make sure that we specify, because we don't want that to apply to, to things like chimneys.
And I've had a couple of residents contact me about it, and I replied to them that, oh, well, you can't go above forty feet to, it's probably not as tall as you think it is, it probably just looks that way while it's being framed in. Then I went by there and saw, oh, wow.
What, besides the elevator exceeds the limit?
Yeah, and I think in the building that...
That's it.
Yeah.
It's just the elevator, basically.
Basically, what they did is they took advantage of the rooftop.
They went forty feet to the top of the ceiling.
To the terrace height, and there's a parapet wall, that doesn't count either, and they have to have egress and...
And then there's another ten or twelve feet for the elevator shaft to access the rooftop.
Can you do an elevator without exceeding that, if you...
If you did an elevator shaft, it'll, it'll be back down about thirty feet.
Okay.
Because elevator, about ten feet.
Well, they could, they could, you know, technically stop the elevator on the third floor and have steps going to the roof.
But that'd have two means of egress, they got steps, ain't an elevator. So, fire code gets them.
Can you have two steps to steps?
Yeah. They kind of took advantage of the situation.
And if you have a commercial building, I think you gotta have handicap accessibility to, if it's a commercial building, to the third floor.
If it's commercial.
Right. These are not, these are residential. It's something, I mean, we'd be glad to go back and look at it and see if we can't sort of parse out what we want to address.
We either need to decide if we want to allow that across the board, or do we want to amend it and just say that that's gonna be the one, the one that got in.
Which building is this on, Councilman Cony?
It's a house that's under construction, that's kind of across the street from Greer's, and I've been contacted by several people about it.
Minute Court.
Minute Court, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's a single-family residence, it's not, it's not a commercial building, it's a single-family residence.
I think preventing even a business from having an elevator, if you're gonna do three stories, would be detrimental in the future if they wanted to invest in it.
But I think the elevator is to access the rooftop.
Got it.
Which is basically the fourth floor.
You could, you could have, you could still have access to the third floor, no problem. So, just something to throw out there for y'all.
Okay.
Thank you, Wayne, sorry, I keep bringing it up.
Well, council, we have, if you look at page four, and I'm looking at the...
Jack, before we get into that, is there, Richard, does anybody know where we are with the library as far as repairs? Oh, what phase are we? Halfway?
I think there may be an advance of that. Lance has been keeping me up to date. Lance and Richard Peterson's kind of in the lead on that. It's gone exceedingly well.
It looks good. The work that's been done looks good.
I knew know they're at least on schedule, if not in advance of schedule. So it's, everything has gone much more smoothly than everybody breaks for.
Gotcha.
And I cannot, from the likely, remember what the total contract time was, but six months is sticking in my mind, and I think we're over halfway.
January third is the finish date on the contract.
Okay, so, and I think they probably will be out of there by then.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, council?
Sorry about that.
All right. Mayor, anything else before we move on? Okay, if you look at page, if you look at the draft of the budget, October the eighth, 2018, if you make, if you look at page four, or if you have the prior version, which was dated August the twenty-seventh, it's on page five. This is kind of a, a real high-level overview. If you go down to governmental expenses, it's, it's broken out into general government, police, fire, economic, community development, parks and rec, planning and development, and public works. Okay, so that's seven different governmental departments. And then if you add to that our four utilities, gas, water, wastewater, and electric, there's eleven departments we're gonna, you know, say that the city is broken into in the budget. So tonight, and as hard as we tried, we didn't quite get there, you know, we're not gonna be eleven for eleven tonight, but, but I believe that we're ready to pass eight out of these eleven departments. The four utilities would be four of those, and they remain, other than edits that the mayor made prior and some other edits that Jimmy and Robert may have discussed, they remain relatively unchanged from the budget numbers. If you look at what was given out the last revision on October the eighth, as far as utilities go, there are no edits to that budget in any utility. There are four of the seven of those governmental, if you say just expenses, portions of the budget that we would like to pass tonight. Those are the police, the fire, economic, community development, and planning and development services. That leaves general government, parks and rec, and public works. And so what I would like to do is try to focus on those three, and Robert, just step in, I'm gonna try to walk through some of the questions that we had, see if we can't, you know, answer some of these. I'd ask, you not ask us to add them to tonight's agenda, but I could, I would say very easily that we would get to them at the, at the next meeting. You know, I don't know if we want to call a special meeting for three items. I think that, you know, having eight of the eleven passed tonight is going a long, long way towards, towards getting this passed pretty much on time. So, I would ask you to turn to page, I think it's page forty, I'm sorry, I'll have to find that again. I'm looking for capital expenditures for public works. So, Mr. Johnson, if I can get you up here?
Yes, sir.
If I can find that page, I can find it in the old one, but not in the...
Thirty-seven.
Yeah, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, okay, I started at page thirty-nine and went the other way. Okay. So, on these capital purchases, there was one that's pretty self-explanatory as to why there's no... as to why there's no number, and, and maybe there's an easy explanation for even the sanitation. So under streets, under item nine, there's a, uh, three sixteen cat excavator lease, and then there's the option to purchase it for, purchase it for two seventeen or lease it three years at seventy-seven thousand, uh, with, uh, and if we don't, if we do lease it, all right, if we, if we decide we wanna purchase it, that has to go into the budget, that, that, that expense is not factored in. So with the expense not being factored in, the revenue, where we're gonna get the revenue is not factored into that, but just hold that thought, because we're gonna lump it all together here. So, if we think we should lease that, and, Richard, I want your opinion. You remember last year when you had a, a list of things and we kinda decided, there were eight or nine things, and some of them we decided to purchase, and some of them we thought it was better to lease. If the lease price, the finance rate was so low, it made more sense to lease and not bust the budget. This one, if we decide to lease, won't even show up in this year's budget. So that's why it's not in there, it won't show up until twenty twenty, so, um, I kinda maybe wanna get your opinion, Richard, as to whether or not you think that the leasing is the way to go. Otherwise, we have to adjust the budget. If we, if we decide to purchase it, we have to adjust the budget by two hundred and something odd, a thousand dollars.
And I tell you, the, the lease is, 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 is not only a cash flow consideration, but when, you know, you're getting three point five percent cost of financing, it, it's not, it's not a heavy burden to pay that lease. And if it, if it allows the, the current budget you're dealing with to go further, that's a decision that y'all make. It, it, to me, the acquisition, getting the piece of equipment is, is the valuable consideration. How we get it, what works best for the city's finances really is a city council, mayor. The, the cost of lease is relatively low, uh, and it spreads it out over three years, and these are basically at the end of the third payment, that's a dollar and it's yours, so it's, it's own. The one thing I like about the excavator, I do want you to think about this, it's, it's a piece of equipment that we should possess for twenty-plus years, meaning that, that it is a long-term investment for the utilities and public works to have that piece of equipment to do that work, as opposed to the average twelve to sixteen thousand dollars a year we're renting it. So, um, so I, I like the lease, I've always been very comfortable with it, because what happens is, is that then you get to see in, in the public works budget after we get into this, there's a, there's, there's amount of money that is set aside in the carrying cost of, of servicing that lease. Well, they're all gonna retire in three years, so that, that when we come back in, 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 in the fourth year from last year and say it's time to add a garbage truck or replace a garbage truck, we've already built our budget where that lease payment's already built in, but it's not, it, we've paid off that last truck, so it's kinda rolling, rolling it over. And I think in the long run, what Jill and the mayor talked about, that makes the budget from doing the ups and downs, where you have the years where you have the big expenditure and you're, you're spreading it out. And as long as the interest rate is relatively low, uh, the cost of opportunity that lease is, is, is low for the city. Again, if y'all are more comfortable with taking hard capital dollars and, and purchasing this equipment outright at, at, at the time of purchase, I, I support that decision, that, that's, that's y'all's comfort level. The other weird thing right now with some of this equipment, especially the solid waste trucks, is, is because of the lead time for delivery, it's really messing up the, you. We, we have, we, we've ordered the trucks that were budgeted last year, but they, the checks will not, the first lease payment won't come in until sometime in calendar year twenty nineteen, because we're not expecting delivery till January, February.
So, so let me, let me, so, council, you know, if you look at the numbers, the cost to lease this is, I think, very favorable. I, I, I would suggest the leasing of that, uh, there's a cost, uh, from, it goes from two seventeen to, to two thirty-two. Very minimal, I think, had minimal impact on the budget to lease it, so, uh, if y'all are willing, uh, I would suggest that we lease that, but how do you know that you won't have a lease payment due until FY twenty twenty?
That was something that the treasurer and finance, that, that's because it's, it's, it's an arrears type of arrangement, right, so.
And, and it takes a little time to get it here.
Yeah.
It's an arrears, you pay after the first year that you've had it?
I didn't broker those deals.
We got the information from the treasurer, and I, I looked for some hard facts on that this afternoon, and I could not find any.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is if it, if it does show up in July, then that first lease payment's probably gonna be seventy-seven thousand in July. Does it make more sense to put the seventy-seven thousand in, in the budget, rather than leave it out? I, I, that's kinda.
Well, my recommendation is, is if, if, if we put it in, and, and even if it has to carry over if we get through another budget cycle, then we carry it over, and that way we're not back here asking for you to put it in the budget at that time.
But, and that's why we're here, because now that affects revenue.
Sure, yes, sir.
The, um, these capital purchases are coming out of a capital purchase fund, so it's just a matter of transferring those to the general fund to pay for it. So it's not gonna affect, it's just gonna be a pass-through, and, um, also on this, we've been putting the capital purchases as, you know, the ordinance for the sales tax, which we would wanna.
How can you do that, mayor? I mean, that ordinance.
No, no, I mean, that's, that's already in place, or is it capital projects or purchases?
It's capital projects.
Capital projects fund, yes.
Yeah, I don't think you can take that.
No, but we do have reserve funds for capital purchases.
And you comfortable that we have the funds for that, to just take another seventy-seven thousand out if we need to?
I think it's in, in cap, for capital purchases, not just capital projects fund, but I think there are funds available.
Just like a look at that, because I would, I, I agree with Robert, I think, Robert, I heard you say it makes more sense to put it in for next year, and if we roll it over.
But, yeah, like Richard said, you know, don't wanna come back in here.
Right.
Isn't that the first one?
And so while y'all were looking at that. So.
If you'll read it to me, I'll read it.
Yeah, so, Richard, while you're looking, or while they're looking for that number, so now, when you go down to sanitation, the first five items, there's no dollar amount for any of those, and, uh, if you look at one and two, those are carryovers for, from twenty eighteen, so I'm assuming they have been ordered.
They have been ordered, yes.
So I think it's probably safe to assume we're gonna have a payment due in this fiscal year, right?
Well, right, right, well, from my understanding, and the way it was typed up here, that those two would not be, um, due until twenty twenty, so that was why there was zero there, but those.
Well, they were budgeted last year though, weren't they?
Well, but, yeah, but because the budget, the timing of, you know, the passing of the budget, they didn't get ordered until late, and then it, it just kinda. When do you expect those to be in, Richard?
Uh, we're hoping by January of twenty nineteen, so.
So I, I, I hate to say it, but I find it hard to believe we're not gonna have a payment on those in, in January. I di- I didn't realize, you know, you can wait until October, at least, of twenty nineteen to pay for something you take delivery in, or even a lease payment that you take delivery in, in January, or.
And Jill and I may need to call, uh, the banker, I mean, what we did ask him to quote was an annual lease payment as opposed to a monthly payment, and it may very well be set up that upon closing, that the annual payment is due twelve months from closing, so if that is the case, uh, then, then you're right, it wouldn't be paid until then. But I don't think that there's a banker in the world would, would not refuse you to be front-loaded either, and, and go ahead, and so on the third, start of the third year, you pay it off and, and you own it, so, um, but, but I'll be glad to get with Jill and we'll.
Well, that's the information that we need to move forward. So, so just on all five of those, if you, and, and a couple of things. Does it make more sense to purchase or to lease? Uh, so then, for one and two, since they were approved last year, how did we have them being paid for last year? Did we have them being leased, or did we have them being purchased outright?
You budgeted for a one-third of a lease payment. We, y'all recommended a three-year term to own, and, um, and that's what you budget, yes, sir.
So just like that excavator, I think it makes sense to put at least one year's lease payment in there, and then so on and so forth, maybe for those first five. And so that number, that number, when you, when you take the one from streets and the five from sanitation, is three, just with the lease payments alone, is three hundred and seventy-four thousand, two twenty-three. So, if we decide that we want all of those pieces of equipment, and we decide that we wanna lease them all, I, yeah, I'm, I'm asking council, I think, you know, it may make sense to put a number in there, not, not zero.
I just wanna just say real quick that these purchases also, we can find out from impact fees. The, cause because they're new and we're adding to them, um, impact fees can probably pay for this. We have about five and a half million over our rainy day funds and and operating that we can use for pretty much anything. Of course, we want a pool just to have it, but you can make these purchases, and out of that also will come the K-one center, you know, uh, and any, anything else you want, but we don't wanna.
But that's what we need to see, so.
Well, that's, that's, this is in your budget book.
But does it, does it matter for, is it impact fees, whether it's leased or purchased?
No.
And is this on the mayor's, is this on the capital, the seven million roughly in, in capital, comes, looks like most of it's impact fees.
If you, if you look at the one that says city bank accounts and types, it's a spreadsheet that was.
Yeah, we got it.
Okay.
So.
All of those under account type, you can see they're all available.
What page are you on?
It's page fifty-eight of the August, um, August version.
Page fifty-eight, okay.
There's capital police, capital fire, capital transportation, capital parks, capital projects.
Yeah, but that's from impact fees, so that.
But that's what you're talking about, from impact fees.
Well, oh, I'm, yeah, but above at the, at the top are the city cash accounts.
Well, what I would just ask you to do, and, and this is why I said, let's not, let's not try to rush it on tonight, is to figure out where that money's gonna be coming from, and then put that in, in the budget, because you need to have, if you're gonna have that expense, and I'm not arguing with the expense.
Right, but it is in the budget, how we pay it.
Let's, let's find out where the revenue's gonna come from, and if it's coming from a pot of money, let's put it in there, so we see where it's coming from.
And that's all on the front page of the budget.
Right, that, that way the ba- the budget's balanced.
Okay.
You know, so you'll show a, a line of income from, you know, a transfer from this, one of these accounts, or multiple accounts.
On the front page of the, of the budget, it has what's coming out for, um, capital projects and purchases, um, what's coming out for impact, what's coming out from a transfer from utilities, and you can compare it.
Will that number not change, though, because if you add these expenses under these, uh, purchases, I mean, that number's gotta change, right, because it's showing a zero right now for those. It's, it's gotta change about three hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars.
And we, we have it to do that, but, you know, we can adjust that.
That'd be great. Robert, you know, in, in public works, it's pretty extensive, is there was anything?
Mayor, what, you say when it's on the first page of the budget, what budget?
What page would that be on for them?
You're talking about, are you talking about the memo, or are you talking about the one that has everything on the bottom that shows?
It's on total expenses, this is just for the city side.
So, if you look on page five, under revenues.
Which, which one, October, October eighth or August twenty-seventh?
October eighth.
They're off by, they're usually off by a page if you're looking in the other.
Yeah, you've got, um, your municipal capital improvement funding of four hundred thousand, and then you've got, um, your transfers from impact fees.
Nine sixty-eight.
Yeah, I think that's what the mayor's referring to.
And then also the utility transfer.
Right.
Okay. But if you've got it balanced right now and you don't have any numbers in there, I think that number has to change.
It, it really is just a pass-through, though, because we have the funds in our cash accounts.
Well, it's a pass-through, but it's, it's an expense, I mean, it's, it's real money, right, I mean, we're spending, so we gotta.
No, I'm just saying that we have the cash account that you can look at on the city bank accounts, and I think that with the purchase of K-one, you, leasing would be the better way, I would think.
I don't disagree with that, I mean, I don't, I don't think we did.
We'll, we'll make, Richard and I'll get together and make sure that we.
All right, just get that, just get that accounting straightened out, I mean, because it was a fairly significant number.
Payment on.
If it'd been ten thousand, we could've said, just get it straight, but, you know, it's four hundred thousand.
And I just took his word that the payments were gonna be due twenty twenty.
Right. Okay. Was there anything else on public works that you can think of, Robert? Before we move on to the next subject on that.
I think that was the, the big one.
And just as kind of a, a primer to, uh, a, a grant update that's also has a budgetary component. Sherri Lee, Sherri Lee and I did have a meeting with Aldott today concerning the roundabout at North Section Street, one oh four scenic and veterans. Few little things that they needed some clarification on, but they feel like that, yes, it is gonna be funded this budgetary year, and probably before the end of the year, so, um, it looks like it's a.
Was that twenty percent from us, or?
It's only ten percent, but it still was ten percent of one point three million dollars, so, uh, still, a hundred thousand here and a hundred thousand there, it starts adding up, it'd be real money, they say.
Yes, that's the highway safety improvement, um, for the roundabout, and we did have that money in the budget, so, the match.
That is in here?
Uh, I think so. What page was that?
Capital projects. Roundabout, is this it?
Yep, roundabout at one oh four in section, and we put a hundred and fifty thousand on a placeholder with a note that twenty of that is, the landscaping's a hundred percent on us, so. They only pay for grass.
So, page, what page was that?
Uh, thirty on the October eighth.
I told Jill earlier today that I kinda like, I do use both of these, because the, the, uh, August numbers show some history, and, and, and the, the, the eighth are, the October the eighth are more revised, but the others kinda show the history, so.
We ran out of space on pages.
Caught flipping back and forth between them. Okay. I see some, um, some other things, we'll, we'll get, we'll get back to that, I'll have another talk, sorry about that.
Put in the estimated impact fee by department also, I'm not sure if it was in an email or in this budget book, but, um, it, it shows what each account should get, and then overall what it should, but it was al- also based on, um, estimates from what we've had in place. It didn't include the increases and other fees that we, we had from the new study, so it's a, a little bit conservative.
And I just wanted to double-check, I think, uh, last meeting, um, Richard, I believe it was you that said that Paul was interested in taking out the litter control and then making all his gardener apprentices to gardener status, um, is that, I need to get a figure for that.
Okay.
And it was budgetary neutral, meaning actually it's a little bit, the, the, to increase the gardener apprentices to gardener ones was less than what we would pay the low end of a litter control, so it would, it would not drive the number up.
Okay.
Okay, we're, we're gonna review that a little more. Let me go to, kinda jump around here a little bit. I wanna go to page, I think it's page four or five. It's page, um, four. And this is under, um, revenues, this would be general fund revenues. And I believe, mayor, uh, Councilman Brown sent you a text, you confirmed the property tax projection was, was derived from the, uh, tax assessor?
Straight from the, yes.
Okay, so that's usually.
The two different budgets might've varied a little bit, but the one.
No, they were close, I, I don't think they changed.
We, we estimated, and then we put in there the actual.
Okay, yeah, because they're usually pretty accurate, we can count on that, okay. So, if you go to, uh, the other projections of taxes, local taxes, uh, that's mostly sales tax, and you have a projected increase of, I'd have to go back to last year's, I wanna say it was about six hundred and sixty thousand. From seventeen to eighteen, there was a, it was either five hundred. From seventeen to eighteen, there was a, it was either five hundred or five hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in revenue, actual. And then we're projecting from eighteen to nineteen, about a six hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase. I, I don't wanna, I, I don't have a crystal ball, and I don't wanna say that's wrong, but I'm, I'm still, you know, at some point in time, this sales tax revenue curve's gonna flatten out a little bit because, you know, of online shopping, it's just, it's a fact of life, most, we're a thriving community, thriving downtown, and we're growing really fast, so our revenues hadn't flattened, but in, in most communities across this country, sales tax revenues are flat or decreased, and in some cases decreasing. So, I just, I look at the number and, and I get a little concerned, and, and I'm not saying that we need to change it, but I, 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 I am a little bit worried about it being non-conservative, so I, I was thinking about some of the edits that we made to the budget, and Jill, if you.
Real quick to that, the, it has been increasing, but the amount of the increase has been declining. The actual figure that we get from Teddy Fowles, what we end up with is usually more than what they send us. So, that figure will be conservative.
He gives you a sales tax figure as well?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, not sales tax, but sales tax too is also, although it's increasing, the percentage of increase is declining, so did, did we put the, how, in the notes?
You did, no, you put some notes out there, I'm just, I'm just a little.
So, we just did it based on what the trend is?
Now, yeah, that's, that's a little bit, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just, don't want it to go unsaid that I'm a little concerned with that sales tax projection. If you miss it by three or four hundred thousand dollars, you know, it's, it's a fairly significant.
You can see the actual last year, what we estimated and what the actual was.
Yeah, that's what I, I think I said that earlier, we, we went up by five hundred to five hundred and fifty thousand, we estimate six hundred and sixty thousand increase this year. I just, you know, if we, if we equal what we did last year, we've had a good year. And so, but if we only equal what we did last year, we've missed budget by six hundred thousand dollars. So, one of the things that, that I was, was thinking about earlier today was, Jill, when we made some edits to the budget, we reduced it by about two hundred, what was that number?
Two hundred and fifty thousand, I believe.
Let's just call it two fifty, whatever it is, two, two hundred and something, call it two hundred and fifty thousand. You can, you can, you can reduce your transfers from utilities by that, because you say you don't need it, or you can, what I would suggest, reduce our sales tax revenue projections by that amount, so that they're not non-conservative in it. It, you can always go back and ask for more transfers if you need it, you can go back and say, look, we need to transfer more from utilities, but I think even from a budgeting standpoint, if Jill has to go back in, I'm, I'm assuming here Jill, if you have to go back in to utilities and readjust all the transfers, it's a pretty involved, and if we just go in and adjust the sales tax revenues by, decrease that estimate by two hundred and fifty thousand, it makes balancing the budget real easy, and I also think it takes a little bit of that potential non-conservatism out of the budget. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
You know, we're looking at the, the, remember that expense summary we looked at in the meeting, you know, the, as far as the total revenues for the general fund, we're gonna be, you know, it looks like a million or so less than what we budgeted for twenty eighteen.
Yeah, we're gonna get to that, yeah, for sure, I, I want, we're gonna get to that next, that's the next subject we need to cover.
I wouldn't like to say too with, with sales tax, because it is something that is, it's increasing, but the amount of the increase is decreasing.
Right.
I think we need to look at ways that we can ensure that it continues going up.
No doubt.
Yeah, and that, that's what I would like to see.
If we took two hundred and fifty out of the forecast for revenue, we would still have an, an, an increase of four hundred and ten thousand in sales tax.
No, it's not about the, I'm just saying, using some money to invest in ways to increase sales tax. And we don't really spend much.
Well, I think we are addressing that with Sherri Lee's budget, with marketing down at the beach, and we've approved all of that, and so hopefully, hopefully we'll see some return on that investment.
It's the tiniest budget ever for, you know, money like this.
Yeah, well, we gotta start somewhere.
Oh, I know, I, I want us to look at that though, instead of saying, well, we wanna make sure we, I think we can make measures where we can not only make this goal, which is conservative, but exceed it, like we did last year.
No doubt about that, I don't, I think we can all agree to that, but as far as council, y'all have any problem with her just reducing sales tax revenues forecast by two hundred and fifty?
Is there any reason to reduce it right now, based on, wait until we get Richard Johnson's info back?
Well, it was just one thing she could do in the, in the interim, I mean, no, we don't want another revision until we get that too, but.
Well, we know there's gonna be additional expense, so I wouldn't reduce anything.
Well, yeah, I, I don't, I was, that was a simple edit, I mean, you may, you're gonna probably have to go to that capital purchases or impact fee fund to pay for all that other stuff in Public Works. Because artificially, let me, let me back up, I misspoke, not artificially, potentially artificially inflating the sales tax revenues could be a bad thing, and I just, one place I wanted to start to take a little bit of that, right, out of it.
Fair enough.
A little bit of that optimism I had to budget just to hedge our bet a little bit, we can go back and look at those other places that the mayor said to, to make those purchases, those lease payments. I, I just wanted to get a little bit of agreement on that, because I'm a little bit concerned with those, with those projections, and the same for licenses and permits. We've got them going up a significant amount, and, you know, if you miss them by two or three hundred thousand dollars, which we, we could easily, you know, we, we got a two or three hundred thousand dollar shortfall in the budget. So, I kinda wanna just touch on that, have a general discussion on that. Now, Robert, do you wanna go over that difference in what we showed in our revenues in this, you might have to go back to the August twenty-seventh numbers, and then I want you, you probably don't have them, but I have them. And you, did you bring them, Robert, did you bring the monthlies, the recent monthlies?
I don't have the, the most recent.
Well, this is through September, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's eleven out of twelve months.
Yeah.
For the year, and look at, if you look at August twenty-seventh, look at page five, okay?
Well, I just, I just looked at the sales tax, and it looks like we were saying eight point six for the year or eight point seven, and it actually came in at eight point four.
But it, what was the original budget?
For eighteen?
Nine point seven.
Eight point three for sales tax?
Well, total, total local taxes, total local taxes budget you have in your budget, and this number didn't change. Nine, nine point seven million, nine.
That includes all the taxes though, that's not just sales, that's beer and wine and liquor.
Yeah, I just have it under here as local taxes.
Yeah, it's just warped into one.
If it's just sales tax, we exceeded the budget.
So, when I've been talking to all that taxes, I've been saying sales, because it's predominantly, but I've been talking all local taxes.
Right.
Well, the sales income actual exceeded the budget.
The budget.
Okay, but total local, it did as well, we're projecting to be over that.
Right.
Yeah, we're projecting ten million, but it was the budget was not.
I didn't, I didn't argue that, but I just didn't want the rate of increase to supersede that again.
That's dropping from nine to seven to five.
Yeah, so, if you go to, I'm looking at our monthly financials, ending in August, and there's a, there's a discrepancy in our total revenues for the city. Now, follow me, on page five, the budget for twenty eighteen, it says total revenues for this was twenty-six point.
Seven eight.
Seven eight million. If you go into the monthly financials, it says the total annual budget, general fund revenues is thirty point six five nine million.
Where, where are you?
Is that that, that thing you asked about? It's because when the budget was approved, we added many departments, planning, building, marina, all kinds of stuff, and the formula just didn't, on that budget, that one budget line, it did actually on the actual column, but on the budget line, it didn't pull all the different new departments like it was supposed to, and that's what the problem was.
On which, it didn't pull them?
Um, on the budget number. It didn't pull the, some of the individual departments, it included the old departments, but it didn't pull the new departments like planning and building, those that were separated out when the eighteen budget was passed.
So, she said that budget column is, is not right.
It's not, it's not.
I understand, but would it be low, if you added them, would it go up? Would it be, it go up, okay, well then that makes the problem even worse. Because in this, in this budget, total annual budget on this monthly, it says that our total revenues were thirty point six five nine. That's what was budgeted, and if you look at the projected for this year, we're at total revenue of twenty-seven point two. Now, we're still a month shy, unless if you go back to August.
The projected is what is projected, and that's based on the whole year, right?
Right, right.
But the, the thirty includes transfers, the twenty-seven does not include transfers.
Thirty plus four, twenty-six point seven, there's a number, that's a difference.
Yeah, the budget amount was twenty-six.
You scared me.
No, it scared me.
Well, we, we exceeded it by a million.
Well, we, uh, I've got about five hundred thousand. Roughly five hundred thousand.
Well, the bu, the budget, just note the budget number in the financial, it, it didn't get updated, it is now.
I see that now.
But.
Yeah, that's almost, yeah, that's to the penny, that's right.
Right, right.
Where I was going with that, and I won't go there now, but if you added another month of revenue, we were still gonna be shy about a, a million, which worried me. So, if that number is correct in the budget, twenty-six, then your, your projection is.
Well, that's what we were projecting.
About four hundred and.
He's looking at all, are you?
About four, about four hundred and sixty-five.
August is financial, right, August.
So, what is, another month, what can we look at actual now?
So, what did, what did you, you say the August revenue was?
Uh, August was one point, about one point seven, so you could assume that September's one point seven.
Wait, the total revenue without transfers.
Twenty-something.
Well, there's no transfer there on that month.
I just pulled up September, if that's what this is.
We're good on that, I, I got it.
Yeah, yeah, so this is what we're checking.
That, that, that is a simple explanation.
I, I will tell you that the, just, I don't know what page of the comprehensive budget where they have all of the overages and under what's.
Oh, in the, in the comprehensive financial report, I think it's towards the back.
What is that? And what's it called?
It's variances.
Variances, that we are a lot more on target than we have been in the past, a lot more.
Good job, council. Does anybody else have any questions on that? I know we got a little bit more going through, but we cleared up, we cleared up some major.
I wanna know that number later.
Well, I have the back out transfers, I think includes transfers.
Council, do y'all have any more questions? Let's go through the agenda. I think we, we got a long way towards getting some, some important questions answered. I get through the whole meeting today and on time. Okay, there is a final adoption, I think we should leave comments for that until we get to that portion of the meeting. Wayne, would that be you and Buford?
Yes, sir.
Calling for that, okay. Item six is a final read of the lodging tax ordinance. Yeah, once again, I think we should withhold comments, I think we can all cover that. Item seven. Joe, since you're here, I started waiting till the council meeting, do you wanna come forward and just brief us real quick on that AIP? I think I covered it in my comments earlier in our committee reports. Basically, I said we're pretty much finishing out the east side, we're gonna have the, the wastewater system completed, we're gonna have the top coat of asphalt, and it's gonna make us ready to put an FBO fuel farm, lease of grounds for private hangars and tee hangars and tie downs and everything else.
That's, that's phase, that's the phase we're starting like next week.
That's what's on the agenda.
No, what's, what's the agenda is to prove, to make application for two thousand nineteen.
Oh, okay.
You know, that would be the road behind the hangars.
Oh, that's right.
About six hundred thousand dollars, and re, and, and redoing the pavement, redoing the pavement on the taxiways, which is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Do we need to add to that pavement behind, to the south of where we have it now, where, where they're gonna do the finish coat now?
Yes.
You know, the plan showed more asphalt to the south of there.
No, there, there will be, I think that, I think that's phase, that's two thousand twenty. When we did the capital plan for five years, next year is the road behind the, and the fuel farm linkage, and the re, and the repaving of the, of the taxiways. Two thousand twenty-one is finishing up the east side sixteen, what you're talking about, going south.
Yeah.
About another three million dollars, and twenty-two is the four million dollar repayment of the runway.
When are we gonna ask, I, I mentioned earlier in the comments, asking for some money to repay us for the land acquisition?
Uh, probably two thousand, two thousand three, two thousand twenty-three.
Two thousand twenty-three, okay.
We've, we've pushed that, the FAA got a five, got, first time in, in the, in the foreseeable, has gotten basically congressional approval to go forward with, the, the AIP money's set. So, we felt like it was a good time to ask for all the money that we'll need in the next three to four years to finish out the airport. There's seven, eight million dollars more on the table to do that, that's what, that's what our plan, as opposed to asking for just discretionary money for.
Let me make sure I didn't mess this up then, so, with what's being done right now, with the phase that's already been approved, the funding's been approved, we should be in a position to do those ground leases, to start building out some at east side, start generating revenue, right?
This, this phase, we'll be able to, yes, we'll, I mean, we'll, we'll have hangar leases in place by March of two thousand nineteen.
That doesn't mean that they'll, well, I guess we'll collect the ground, but then they'll.
Well, well, we'll, we should have hangars coming out of the ground by next year this time.
We, we're on like a final revision of our request for proposals right now, they're working on that, we, we went through it pretty thoroughly, and there were a lot of comments, so we're, we're working on it to make, to make sure that we get that right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Joe, what was that amount you're asking for, for?
Uh, it'll be about, about nine hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
But that could change, but it'd be nine hundred thousand dollars, what, what, what we'll ask for.
Right, and none of that, none of that's city money?
None of it's city money, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item eight, we will, this was a resolution that we put in prior to knowing exactly how, how far we would get up until today to extend the budget. So, this would only extend those portions of the budget that aren't approved tonight, and it'll really only extend the budget for no more than two weeks. And we put in a, a later date, so we didn't have to come back. In fact, we didn't even put a date in there, we just said be extended to allow the invoice finisher to continue as needed until we pass those other, I'm gonna assume we pass the eight tonight, the other three portions of, of the budget. Holidays, on the holidays, there are no significant changes. I will note that on Monday, December twenty-fourth, rather than have employees come in and work a half a day Monday like they do a lot on a Friday, is, it's a Monday, is to give them the entire day off, it's, it's not a half day. And that was at some employee's suggestions, and, you know, I, what's gonna happen on December twenty-fourth anyway, right?
Well deserved.
Well, no laughing now. Utilities people said lots of things, right? That's right.
Cell phone tower's going up.
Yeah. We'll all be happy with our new cellphone service by then. Okay, timekeeping system, I guess that would be Jeff, if anybody has any questions about the timekeeping system. Public Works for the horticulture, that'll be RJ. We've already talked about the TAP grant, the change in that, Mr. Johnson, if we have questions. There's a donation to be accepted from item thirteen, and if anybody has a question about the, what the value of those are, I don't, I don't think it's up for the city to, you know, we're not appraisers, that's up to the, the donor, that's their responsibility to. to, to get their appraisal correct. We talked about the memorandum of understanding in the work session on item fourteen. There is an item fifteen, in which there's a request to use some portable lights to ensure the safety of some children and adults. They did try to go out and rent lights, apparently because of Hurricane Michael, there are just simply none available to anybody. Item sixteen is a request to locally match an MPO grant for signaling at the intersection of Greenoe and Old Batter's Road. Who will speak, that'll be you, RJ, do you mind if I call you RJ today?
I don't mind.
Okay, item seventeen pertains to the school resource officers, which I believe we've, we've already agreed to fund. Appoint of, appointment of election officials is eighteen. One appointment to the education advisory committee is nineteen, and then a request from the Fairhope Film Festival on item twenty. We will have an executive session after public participation. I do anticipate that lasting approximately thirty minutes, hopefully less, I do not expect any action to be taken at the conclusion of that executive session. I will say now, Council, we need to be thinking about when we want to hold a hearing for our treasurer. And I suggest we do it as soon as we possibly can, we don't wanna keep putting this off. Really, was, you know, if we could do it tomorrow, if we called it an emergency meeting, we could hold it as soon as tomorrow. That only requires a one hour notice, if it's a special meeting, it has to be given a twenty-four hour notice, which would put us into either tomorrow at a quarter till six, or Wednesday, so I would suggest that being Wednesday, but I would, my recommendation is to, is to hold this just as soon as we can, so if y'all have any input on when you might be available Tuesday or Wednesday.
I will not be available tomorrow until, I don't know, four thirty, five o'clock.
Yeah, and I'm probably not available tomorrow until about six thirty-ish, so Wednesday would be.
What are y'all looking like Tuesday, what, what time of the day works best for you?
That is Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Wednesday. Can we make a, you know, I don't wanna take too much out of your workday, can you, can you make a three or a four? Hang on, Lisa, what do you have to add to that?
Here's, this election's going from three to five in council chamber, because all the other rooms are taken up.
On Wednesday?
On Wednesday. And it's mandatory that our election official take that class.
Should we do it at five o'clock Wednesday?
Do you know how long it's gonna last?
We do not, and I, I don't wanna put, I don't wanna, I don't wanna underestimate it, some of these can get quite lengthy. I, I don't know, it, it could be an hour, it could be four hours. I think we probably have to just suck it up and do it, I would suggest Wednesday at five, based on what I'm hearing, can you make that? You two make that?
I can make that.
Make that. Okay. Clerk, can we get you to schedule that for Wednesday at five P.M.? Contact Mr. Henson and ask him if he wants that to be open or closed. That's his option. So, what'll happen, Council, is that we will hold that hearing Wednesday at five, at his request, whether that be open or closed. After the hearing, we will go into a session for, what did you, what's that term you used, judicial? Quasi judicial executive session. We will have to exit that if we are ready to take a vote, and I would highly encourage us to be ready to take a vote. We are required to uphold the mayor's decision or overturn the mayor's decision at that time. Y'all okay with that? Y'all okay with that? Okay. All right, if we get set up, we'll get, you know, started a little early, 'cause it's, it's him that we're there for. Okay, five thirty Wednesday, does anybody have any questions that I might, or clerk might be able to answer on that process? Okay. Okay, all right, let's adjourn, and meet back here in about ten minutes.